Meeting to order, will you please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for coming this evening, everyone is present except for Tom Anderson and our student council rep Kristika, I believe he's coming a little later. Before I take a motion to approve the agenda, there will be one addition, there'll be one more proclamation for our school nutrition employees. With that, do I have a motion to approve the agenda? By Todd, second by Eric, any comments or discussion?
Just one quick question, where will the proclamation go, will it go in consent agenda or is new business?
It'll go in, I believe it's new business along with the other proclamation.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries six zero. On our consent agenda this evening is the check wire transfer dispersment summary, the bank reconciliation statement, board minutes from April 23rd, 2012, and that's for the study session and the board meeting. The resignations that are listed, and then the 2012-13 resolution for membership renewal to the Minnesota State High School League. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? By Stacy, second. By Eric, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries six zero. Now we'll move on to Laker Pride.
It's my pleasure to welcome Tom Daris, first grade teacher at Glendale Elementary, and a member of the Google Academy Teacher Certified Google Teacher, who just returned from London and is going to tell us about what his experiences were there and how you got there. Welcome, Tom.
Thank you. All right, this is my third year teaching, ninth year in the district, actually started in this building under Deb, nine years ago as a special ed secretary. For the last three years, I've been trying to infuse technology into my classroom. I happened to start the year we did the smart boards, so I asked to be on that smart board committee that first year, and since then I've infused the smart boards and the clickers and the flip videos, and now I'm kind of moving towards combining all that with some YouTube, Google stuff. I've been thinking about doing the Google Teacher Academy for a couple of years, but I know it's a highly selective process, so I just submitted an application in January thinking, you know, I'll probably have to apply a couple of times before I get in, and graciously I was accepted this year. So I applied in January, you had to make a one-minute video of how you implement technology, and I'm going to show that video real quick, it's about 59 seconds.
And didn't they throw them out if they were over a minute, wasn't that part of?
I would assume so, but I never heard.
Okay.
I would assume so, just because of rules and stuff. I'm going to pause that for a second. You either could do classroom innovation, and that's the category I chose. The other one was more student-centered, and I thought the classroom innovation would be appropriate for me because I've been trying to infuse a lot of different types of technology, and there we go. And because it had to be short and sweet, I didn't want any, there's a little bit of audio that's on here, but that's okay, but I really wanted it to be just kind of from the kids' perspective of what we do in class using smart boards, working groups, working with our iPads, working with our clickers, flip video everything. You never know how short a one-minute is until you have to start making, and with the flip video, the shortest you can make a clip is three seconds, so nothing is longer than three seconds in that particular video, but students were really excited once I got in. Couple of them thought they were going to London with me, so I had to break it to them. Couple of them couldn't go, couple of my former kids, because I'd gone last, who were really bummed because they really wanted to go with me again, but I thought it was just for me. Rumor has it there's about 600, 650 applicants that applied for it, there were only 50 selected. There were 13 from the United States, the only person from Minnesota. I believe I'm the eighth or ninth, ninth or 10th person from Minnesota ever to go. There was also a big following over in the UK, naturally. It's about every eight to 10 months they have the Future Academy. They all have it in different types of the world, and I asked, "How do you decide?" And the Google people are like, "Where do we want to go next? If we want to go, I'll go to Australia, we go to Australia." So it was kind of interesting to see some of that process. This was a Google product, I have some of these Google products in the corner. This is just a slide, some photos that I put together during my one day at Google. It was a 12-hour, really long day workshop where you were infused with technology, technology, food, technology, technology. They fed you all day, and by the end we're like, "I don't want any more food." So this may check, I don't know if this is going to load up. But there's some different pictures on here, you guys, this is on my blog too, if you want to see more up close details, I also have the link down here. It was a really cool building, you had to be escorted everywhere you went. They had mini kitchens every 150 feet, so no employee is more than 150 feet away from food at all times. But they just had a really neat learning environment, it was just really fun to interact. There was about, there was 50 participants, and there was probably 20 lead Google people. And then we got to not Skype, but what they call a Google Hangout, so we got to interact with people from New York. When I applied, they asked if among that 50, if three to five would apply and do a presentation. And so of course I applied, and I got accepted, and so I got to present my first grade blog to the entire group. I've had a lot of success with this blog, it's a year and a half old, it is approaching 120,000 hits. I use this as my one-stop shop for all parent communication, kids love it, parents love it. I use my Prior Lake website for all things that don't change, and I use this for all news, information, updates, some different social media things. It's been a big hit this year. When we got to Google, they asked to put technology aside as a first activity and come up with things that we do in our classrooms that don't involve technology. And so we ran around the circle, it was kind of a hierarchy of the best ideas, and they picked my other idea to present, which is my classroom, and I'm not going to go through the whole slideshow, but I'll just show you a couple of pictures. My classroom, there's no assigned seating in first grade. I have some small areas to work, I have some areas where voices are off, I have some different areas where kids can talk. I have some clipboards and ball chairs, so kids get to pick throughout the day how they want to, where they want to work. And since I've done it, the kids have really enjoyed having those workspaces. Coincidentally, Google, it's very similar, Google, this is how they have their corporate offices set up, similar this way. So these two both presentations are on there. The whole day was a mixture of what they called Google slams. So they gave you three minutes to talk about a really big thing like Gmail. And they gave you a three-minute, this is what we want to teach you in three minutes. And then we're like, "Okay, we want like an hour on that now." And then they, "Okay, next thing." So they called them slams, it got very, they all kept saying it in like an American accent. All these people from Africa and all these parts of the world, it was kind of funny. But the whole day was centered around learning different things about Google products, how to infuse them in your classroom, new technologies, things we can't talk about because they're coming up, we had to design a disclosure form. But how to use these and how to create with them. So it was a really fun day of how to use Google products, so that was the majority of the day. The end of the day, teachers were awarded with Google certification. That means I can go and teach some different workshops under Google. There's also an additional Google App certification, which I could go get next if I want to, that's a little bit more labor-intensive. One of the greatest things I've got on this is the networking and learning from others. Google Plus is really trying to take off and be that next Facebook, and so I've kind of already grandfathered into the Google community of 600-plus educators that are absorbing ideas about Google. Twitter is also a really big thing with technology and ed tech. One person I follow in Edina is Molly, and I learned a lot just from those connections and bouncing ideas off different educators. And the last thing is bringing it home. Part of my plan that Google requires me to do is develop an action plan for my classroom to help my school and to help the school districts use some of these Google products in the next year or so. And so I know that we'll be having some discussions later on in the fall about where we want to see some of these Google products, but that'll be my next goal is to kind of help with that transition. So it was an amazing experience, I'm glad I went, and I keep learning more and more about Google. It's a never-ending trend in all the things that are amazing with Google, so that's it, thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, I'll do one. You talked about some of the things that you were picked to do to present, and I'm really proud of that, the fact that we've got a teacher that's on the cutting edge and able to influence globally. What was maybe the one or two things that you took away that were most impactful?
The one thing that I took away, which it was a presentation style that infused all the different, like Google Maps and Google Docs and all these statistics, just a way for kids to use all these different products to tell a story. Instead of just having a piece of paper, you give them a map, and they have to write a story, they zoom in on their neighborhood, and now they have to create a story using the pins on a story in their neighborhood, fiction or nonfiction. So just taking things that we already know, Google Docs, Google Maps, and adding it to our curriculum in unique and different ways. So those are kind of, the presentation styles and the things that they're doing in like Writer's Workshop, I think was the most interesting to me. So, so yeah.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations. Now we're at a time in our meeting where we call an open forum, is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to personnel, may I ask?
All right, good evening. First, I recommend the following candidates for employment, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
Rich, second.
Second.
Stacy, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries six zero.
And next I'm presenting the retirement of Joe Garaki, who has been a teacher with the district for 34 years, and I would like to wish him the best as he is off into retirement here.
Do I have a motion to accept the retirement of Joe Garaki? By Eric, second.
I'll second it.
Any comments or questions? Eric.
I had Mr. Garaki, and I must have had him early in his career, and I'm amazed he stuck around after having me and my classmates, you know, that early, surprised he didn't give up teaching completely. But, you know, another one of those teachers that really contributed, influenced the lives of thousands of kids that came through this district, and we have, you know, I'm always amazed when we see the successful, the successful students that come out of this district, and it starts with the teachers in the classroom, the dedication that they've had, the tenure and the commitment they've had to us. So, you know, congratulations, Mr. Garaki, and I hope you have a good retirement, but we'll be sorry to lose you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries six zero.
And next I present the following leaves of absence, and I'm seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept the leaves of absence?
So moved.
By Todd, second.
I'll second it.
By Mike, any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries six zero.
And next I'm presenting a resolution to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence. To go back to our last board session, I did present a resolution proposing to place teachers on unrequested leave of absence, and this is the second part of that process as we had discussed in our previous board session.
Do I have a motion to accept approval of the teachers placed on unrequested leave of absence?
I'll make the motion.
By Mike, second. By Todd, any comments or questions?
You know, it's, again, you know, this is an extremely hard vote. We've got some really terrific, dedicated educators, and personally I hope the best for them. I'm sorry that we can't figure out a way to make this work and keep some really great talent in Prior Lake Savage.
Any other comments? I'd just like to say that I echo what you said, it is unfortunate that this has to happen. Okay, this requires a roll call vote, Eric?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Stacy?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mike?
Aye.
That motion passes six zero.
And next Dr. Groover is actually going to present a recommendation for additional staffing for the 2012-13 school year.
Here we go. For the last two study sessions, we've been talking about, in addition to that 4.4 FTE that you approved at our last board meeting, what is it that we need to do? And is with everything that, every decision we make, we always start with our core values. What drives our words and actions, and that certainly is our partnership, our innovation, our respect, our wise spiritship, accountability, and striving for excellence in all that we do. This helps ensure us that we will have strategic success. We know that at the high school, our highest number of students, our highest enrollment is currently with us and will stay with us over the course of the next several years. We know it also will dip in that our elementary numbers are going, they're stabilizing and going down a little bit as our high school bubble is coming through. In addition to that, we have increased our free and reduced lunch numbers of students over the course of the last several years in a repeatedly higher fashion, and this year we've grown up by almost 4%. So we know that that brings different needs to each of our sites, and because of that, and our focus on students, we want to make sure that we have the right kind of staffing in the right places. The school board priorities for 12-13 are the designations that we've already made, that we continue the cash flow process of, we've had 1.5 to $2 million set aside to make sure that we can meet the budgetary needs that we have, no matter what the shifting that happens at the state level, we are able to do that. We've also set aside that class size dollar money, which is the $500,000 we talked about at our last meeting, and in addition to that, our innovation dollars. So this is the way it looks in our budget with those line items there. You can see that here is the $2 million. Let me turn it on. Here's the $2 million there. The $500,000 for innovation is down here, and the class size reduction in between those two. So those are dollars that we've set aside to make sure that we can meet the needs of our students and our staff as we go through this bubble at the high school, but also understanding that they may be short-term needs, they may be long, some of them are long-term needs. And here's what you approved at the April 23rd meeting, was that we would use, we would continue on $1,6,250 to make sure that we have those positions in place at the secondary level, that's middle and high school, that we approved over the course of this current school year, they will stay in place. And in addition to that, you approved having that 4.4 FTE added to the high school and teachers so that we will have enough staff to reduce class size to get it down to that 32 to 34 range, where it's been higher because of some bubbles and some lost opportunities. So we'll be able to do that in the coming year. In addition, we have that $118,750 remaining for a class size reduction as we go through the summer and August months. Between now and August 15th, we'll look at where those numbers are, the elementary, the secondary also, but throughout our system to make sure if there are some glitches that we can fix them. I'll also have my $100,000 set aside as a superintendent contingency for that purpose. Seven years we haven't had to spend that, believe it or not. The last several years, last three years, we have had to spend it in order to get those class size numbers in friendly, friendly numbers. So we'll continue to look at that as we move forward. So the board asked, beyond class size, what are those pressing challenges for staffing in 2013? And these recommendations that I'm sharing with you tonight have come through two study sessions with the board, one on March 26th and one on April 23rd. And these staffing requests really, this first page of staffing request really focuses on students. At the high school, with the highest number of students coming into the high school, now I'm staying there, we believe that adding two deans of students would really be of benefit to our students. These individuals would work with individual students to help establish that connection between attendance and academic achievement. They will initiate the connection for students with appropriate resources to assist them, and potentially including school social worker, the chemical dependency counselors, the school nurse, et cetera. And these people will take an active role in communicating the school's objectives related to student management and attendance to parents and to students and to the community, as well as confer with parents, the teachers, and community, referral agencies, and personnel as needed regarding student attendance. We have, we have support for students at different levels. These are the kids in the middle, these are all of our students that have issues with attendance or have issues with feeling like they're not fitting in, or they hit a bump in the road, and they need extra support. Right now, we have three assistant principals at the high school that divide the 2,400 students into thirds. And that is really an ungainly amount of students for them to be able to reach for our discipline issues, as well as for just making sure that they're attending class, that they're doing well, that things are going well in their lives. We have guidance counselors, and those folks take care of their schedules and placements and helping them through the post-secondary options. and placements and helping them through the post-secondary options. But the discipline falls on those three assistant principals and Mr. Lund. And so adding the deans would really allow us to have a physical presence in the hallways during all passing times and having a connection between teachers and a dean, so that if a student is not showing up for classes, having an issue that's different than, that's all of a sudden different, something's happened in their lives, it's changed, and they need to have that extra resource, that person would be there. So adding two deans, this is a position for two years. And then we'll revisit that, not knowing if that's what we'll need or if there's something different that might be needed as we go through those transition of numbers through the high school. The second request is for an assistant athletic director. And this would be an ongoing expense. Although, in the coming years, a third of that cost would be paid for by community education because we have that relationship with community education already in developing our recreational sports for our students. So they would take on that responsibility. And then a third of it would come in 2013-14 with a $10 increase in fees in order to help sustain this position over time. And then a third of it would be ongoing for the general fund. And then the middle school request would be to increase their guidance counselors to two full-time guidance counselors. They each have one full-time and then a part of another one, a small part. And this would increase it to two. And what we found with the sixth-period day is that without that resource time that the teachers have together, that team time, that they're feeling like, and this is, I've heard from teachers over and over again, they're feeling they're not catching kids soon enough that are having issues in that sixth grade through eighth grade level. And that responsibility is really falling to the guidance staff. And this adding to two FTE would really allow for more time with students and helping to address issues before they get larger, and also meeting with families and with calling teachers and resources together. And then the final request on this page is for elementary, is to add just one hour a day back to their secretary, their building secretary. We have ongoing needs there, and this would allow us to keep the elementary buildings open that extra hour. But it would also allow us to assign responsibilities having to do with testing, having to do with student support, to that extra hour of their teacher. And then the second page is, those things district-wide that would make a huge impact. As we've gotten larger, we haven't been able to address. And at this time, we believe it is important that we add one FTE to the human resources department. We have one person doing all the contracts and all the benefits and for over a thousand employees. And then our receptionist is taking care of not only the ongoing traffic, but also all of our substitute teaching requirements and responsibilities on a daily basis. We're tremendously understaffed in that department. And I believe it would help us be more of a resource to our employees and to the public. The second one on this page is a webmaster communications assistant. And as we've moved more into social media, as you heard from Tom Daris, and the opportunities that are there, there are also responsibilities. And we don't have that person to be able to help support our teachers as they move out into that Google world and into the app world, to be able to make sure that we're holding responsibilities, even for the support and technology. And we're also adding to that marketing component of our district of letting our community know who we are and what we're doing. And as we increase that, beyond our Facebook and our Twitter page and the different variety of different ways that we've engaged our public, there will be more and more responsibilities placed there. And so that position would support both communications and the technology department with the webmaster. And then finally, the custodial position of 1.0. Each year, we've been in budget cutting. We've decreased the number of custodians in our buildings. And this person would help us maintain the services and presence for our custodials when they're absent, as well as ensure that our presence is felt both here at the ALC, our bridges, and also in our schools, elementary schools specifically. So those are the recommendations that we make to you tonight. In our study sessions, one of the recommendations was to move the $2 million that we have set aside down to 1.5 million and use that $500,000 to pay for those two-year program additions that you see as an assigned over here. And that would come off of that total amount. But you can see, as we look at our 2013 preliminary, just first blush budget, that in fact, we can afford to do this. And we think these are critical positions that will really help us be the best, that we can be, given the limited resources that we have. And that these are positions that will enhance the current work that we're doing as a district.
Matt, did I leave anything out?
I don't believe you did.
Questions, questions from the board?
So just to reiterate, moving that 500,000 and being able to reallocate that was being driven by going, by getting the extra 6% back from the, from the shift. Because the state's going to be shifting less, we have less of a need for cash flow.
Correct.
Or our cash flow buffer, I should say.
Absolutely.
We're going to, we've just learned going to a 64-36 shift and rather than the 60-40. And so it's going to give us a little bit more flexibility. Julie feels very confident that having the 1.5 million, which we've had over the course of the last three years, we just added to it in this past year when they dropped it down again. That we'll be very sorry.
Any other questions?
I guess one more. Following up with Tom's presentation, do you envision the webmaster and communications person to be a resource for teachers? Or is he going to be just a person?
I believe there'll be a resource for teachers, a resource for Tom Daris, a resource for all of our teachers that are starting to use social media within the context of the classroom. And also be there to help us make sure that we're managing at a policy level, as well as what's going on around our area, that we're being cutting edge, but we're not going off the edge or off the rim there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we, we have discussed this probably over almost four-hour time period, with two hours each time, have asked a lot of questions, asked what the needs really are, and questioned some of the needs that came forward. And I think if there's no more questions, I'll take a motion to approve. By Rich?
I will second it. And Stacy?
I'll take Rich for, okay.
That Stacy?
Stacy and Rich the second.
Thank you.
Any other last minute comments or discussion?
I guess I'll just speak. I initially had some concerns about the dean of students positions. I'm glad that the rationale behind it and the way Dr. Grover's vision of it is that it affects, it will affect the culture as a whole. I think it's really important that we have that out there, that we have a culture that kids can feel safe and are in a healthy environment. And so I'm glad to see that this is really going to touch everybody. I think that'll be a good thing. And I'll just make another comment. I mean, the activities, that's kind of one of my areas I love. I'm excited for that. I think that's going to take off. And Eric definitely, you know, needs the help to keep this going. So I'm excited to see that come forward.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. One more, Matt.
Yes, and lastly, I'm presenting a list of non-renewals for our probationary teachers for the 2012-13 school year and am seeking board approval. And I would just like to point out that this list of teachers consists of teachers in three different positions, teachers for which there may have been performance concerns, teachers for which there may not have been a spot due to the shifting in our student enrollment, and also teachers that run into licensure issues. We often have teachers on variances, and that does make up a substantial portion of this list. And so it can be for any of those reasons. And we certainly hope that we're going to be able to get a substantial portion of the individuals on this list back before we start with our classes in September.
Okay, do I have a motion to accept the non-renewals for continuing contracts for probationary teachers? By Eric, second? By Todd? Any comments or questions? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. We'll move on to old business, the eSTEM committee recommendation. Jeff?
Good evening, madam chair. Members of the board, Dr. Grover. The last board meeting, Karen Rickenberg and I presented to you the recommendations regarding eSTEM. They are in your board packet. Since that board meeting and tonight, we have received feedback from community members who have expressed, for the most part, support. I believe that that information was passed on to you by Christie Musman. Presently, what we are presenting, what I'm presenting to you tonight is those recommendations still in their current format that were presented to you back on the 23rd for board approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the eSTEM committee recommendations?
So moved.
By Todd, second?
I will second.
By Rich? Any comments or questions? Sue?
I'm very excited about the work that's going to commence now as we begin to unravel this and figure out what we're really going to do. We will be the first E-12 district that's looking at STEM initiatives and marrying that with our already very robust environmental education program. So this is the first step toward a new beginning for us.
Any other comments? Mike?
You know, I read the feedback from the community, and I think there was a few things that I think were relevant that in the interest of pursuing the STEM part of the eSTEM, I hope that we don't lose the STEM part. Because I think that came through that, you know, yes, we are a district that values the environmental aspect. But I think we don't want to have that overwhelm the STEM part. And that was something that I saw pretty clearly in some of the comments is, you know, it's a new way of looking at how we're going to be instructing the kids and everything. And so let's not lose sight of the fact that the STEM part, I believe, is a core part of what our community is really excited about. The environmental, I think we've already done a pretty darn good job the last several years. And so I just want to hope that the committee recognizes that it's the last four letters that I think are what are getting people really excited, quite honestly.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Next on our agenda is the approval, or potential approval of the valedictorian and salutatorian committee recommendations. Dave?
Good evening. We've talked about this at study sessions. We had our first meeting, or our first reading at the last board meeting. Essentially, what we would like to do is discontinue the practice of honoring valedictorian and salutatorian at graduation ceremonies for the, you know, reasons we've discussed in length at the boardwork studies and replace that with a system where we would honor all students with a four and above as distinguished scholars at graduation. They would be part of the current practice of our board scholars, which are 3.8 and above. And then we would separate those out, those students with a 4.0 and above and recognize them all by bringing them forward at commencement as distinguished scholars.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the valedictorian and salutatorian committee recommendations?
So moved.
By Mike, second? Eric? Any comments or questions?
I have a quick question, Dave. Right now, board scholar makes up about 10 to 15% of the graduating class.
Yeah.
How many would qualify? Do we have a sense of how many would qualify?
A little less from, I'm giving you ballpark figures. I'm guessing about 30% of the current board scholars. So last year, we had, I'm going to, 64 board scholars, if I'm correct. And so about 30% of that, you know, we're looking in that 20, 24 range in there for this.
And I guess, I guess my question was to validate that this truly is a select, a prestigious
Oh, yes.
Board scholars, is a great recognition of the students that have worked hard. The salutatorian valedictorian's always been a very prestigious honor. And, and we're not diminishing, I think the high school staff's recommendation believes we're not diminishing that in any way.
No, and that's our feeling. We're not diminishing that. We, in fact, the, our top eight to 10 students are so close. We're not talking tens, we're talking in hundreds on most of that. And one of the feelings was we're selecting one or, one or two out of many deserved candidates. And we feel this is a way of honoring a good number of students who do outstanding in their academics. Especially given weighted grades, you know, 3.8 and above is an outstanding GPA. But with weighted grades, 4.0 and above is even beyond that. And we're also hoping that setting that, that bar at 4.0, students are competing against a grade, you know, grade point average and not another student, that students will expand out and maybe explore a few more of the non-academic courses. We were at a workshop, and I'm just going to bring it up here, with Thomas Guske two weeks ago, and even talked about three schools, Harvard, Yale, and Princeton, looking for students who are more well-rounded. Mr. Holmberg was there, assistants there, students who are taking some of the fine arts classes, the business classes, and in fact, they were not necessarily accepting the salutatorians because they wanted more well-rounded students. We hope that a system like this will encourage students to explore some of those classes to, without worrying about it, you know, overly affecting their academic recognition. Didn't mean to pontificate, but I thought.
Any other questions or comments? Mike?
Just a comment, I think all of us received, I only got one email from somebody from the community. I did reply back to the person. And we agreed to have a difference of opinion, which was fine. But I think that they at least appreciated, I basically reiterated what I had said at the last board meeting, you know, my reasons for supporting. And, you know, I think it's, you know, change is for the sake of change. I've never been in favor of, but I think as we progress, there are things that 50 years ago probably made a lot of sense. And I think as things have changed, in this case, it does make a lot of sense for us to do this. So I applaud the committee once again for undertaking this. I think it was well thought out. I don't think that this is a rash decision. And so again, as I mentioned last time, I'll be supporting it tonight.
Any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to new business, self-insured dental. Matt?
We discussed the recommendation to move to a self-insured dental plan at our last board session, and you can see the summary attached in your board packet. I'll just do a quick recap of what we had talked about previously. And also mention that we did have an opportunity to get into all of our buildings and have a conversation with our staff members about that change. So all staff members were invited to participate in those sessions. And a quick recap again, what this means for our employees is essentially that they're going to get a new insurance card. They're going to remain with the same carrier and have exactly the same benefits under this new plan, under a self-insured model. What this means to the district is that if we move forward with normal years for our dental claims, it means that in the first year, we're going to be able to put aside a fiscally responsible amount of money to act as, as our fund in case we do see premium increases that are out of the norm in the future. And on top of that, in the second year, we should be able to see a significant decrease in the cost of insurance, which will benefit both our employees, who have a stake in our premium rates, and also the district, who funds a large portion of our employee plan. And so with that, I make the recommendation on behalf of the district's insurance committee that we adopt a self-insured dental model.
Do I have a motion to approve the self-insured dental program? By Eric, second? By Stacy? Any comments or questions? Eric?
I guess my question would be, and maybe it's for Dever or whoever, have we heard any feedback from the staff around concerns of moving to a self-insured dental program? That was one of the rationales for delaying the vote, was to make sure that staff had the ability to weigh in.
I have not heard any negative feedback from the staff in their, from the staff.
Their concern is that they would call.
Deb? I don't think that's getting picked, your voice is getting picked up. You could just come up here if you want.
Come join me.
There's not been any negative feedback from the staff. Their concern is that it's a smooth transition and that we don't experience some of the glitches that happen when we transferred from medical insurance, but we've been assured by our provider that that won't happen. So staff has no real concerns about this and think it's probably fiscally a good idea to pursue.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thanks, Matt. Now we'll move on. I have a proclamation to read. Tomorrow, May 8th, I believe it's tomorrow,
Yes.
is National Teacher Day, and along with that comes proclamation for great teachers make great public schools. Whereas teachers make public schools great, and whereas teachers work to open students' minds to ideas, knowledge, and dreams, and whereas teachers keep American democracy alive by laying the foundation for good citizenship, and whereas teachers may fill many roles as listeners, explorers, role models, motivators, and mentors, and whereas teachers continue to influence us long after our school days are only memories, now therefore, we, the School Board of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, May 8th, to be National Teacher Day within the Prior Lake Savage Area District. We urge, do I read this too? We urge that we observe this day by taking time to recognize and acknowledge the impact of teachers in our lives. An official recognition whereof, I hereby affix my signature at the 7th day of May 2012. I guess this only says part of what teachers are all about, but thank you. It's great to have such great teachers here, so. And if anyone else has a comment to make, open that up. Sue Ann, you?
Oh, of course I do. I think that, you know, I've been, I've been around the metro area in many different districts, and I would hold our teachers high above any other teachers that I've worked with. They are extremely committed to children and to families and to making a difference in our students' lives on a daily basis, and I see that as I walk through the buildings, whether it's a casual walkthrough or a scheduled visit, I see them committed to making sure that students are learning at all levels. So congratulations to our teachers. Tomorrow is National Teacher Day, but really, kind of it's a celebration that can't go on all week if PTCs get involved the way I know they do at our elementary and middle and high school levels. So our best wishes to all of our teachers.
Okay. Now, next, next on our agenda is our addition of the School Nutrition Employee Week, which is coincidentally the same week. The proclamation is as follows. Whereas nutrition meals at school are an essential part of the school day, and whereas the staff of the district's school meals and nutrition department are committed to providing healthy, healthful, nutritious meals to the district's children, and whereas the men and women who prepare and serve school meals help nurture our children through their daily interaction and support, and whereas the week of May 7th to the 11th, 2012, is School Nutrition Employee Week, now therefore be it resolved that Prior Lake Savage Area School District expresses its deep appreciation to these valuable employees and commends their good work on behalf of children. An official recognition whereof, I affix my signature on this 7th day of May 2012. Again, a very vital, important part of our district, also one of my favorite topics, so thank you very much to them. I appreciate it. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Oh.
Do we need a motion to accept these?
I'm not told that I do. I guess not.
Okay. Just wonder.
It's the power of the board, chair.
I did the proclamation.
I was just asking. Wants to talk.
Okay, we'll move on now to the purchase order requests. Is that Julie?
Good evening, board chair and board members and Dr. Grover. Tonight, we just request that the, that we're able to open up our purchase orders for the purchase, or to request purchases to be paid after July 1, 2012. This is a routine request that we have every year of the board, that we request that we can start submitting purchase orders to our vendors to be delivered after July 1 and paid after July 1, and it's within our normal budgetary regulations.
Do I have a motion to accept the beginning of the issuance of the purchase orders, the 2012, 2013 orders?
So moved.
By Mike, second. By Rich? Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. Thanks. Okay, now moving on to our board meeting, study session proposal. As I said before, we're in transition with doing one board meeting a month and a work session, the second meeting of the month, and so I feel that it's too early to evaluate this process. However, we do need to approve the dates from July 2012 to June 2013. So tonight, that's what we would be approving, only that, and then we will have a discussion in the next month or two about how we want this to continue. Okay? Do I have a motion to approve our meeting dates? By Stacy, second. By Todd? Any comments or discussion?
This doesn't set us in stone, does it? If we decide. I think this doesn't set us in stone, these meeting dates and this organizational structure, does it?
Not the organizational part, for sure.
I mean.
That's not on there. But the meeting dates, we can change these, we just need to give enough notice, I believe.
But both could be regular meetings if we wanted to go back to that type of format.
Yes. Any other questions?
I think the main reason for, well, we never, we don't publish a calendar anymore. That was in the past, why we needed to have it locked down by now, but, yeah. So I think it's really more just for planning purposes, so that we know to block those evenings off, whether you're on the board or administration or whoever, right?
And I think they are posted on our website, aren't they?
Yeah.
Any other?
My concern is just that it's, we're still evaluating whether this, this type of system works for us.
Right, exactly, and that's why we're, these are the suggestions, but we're really only voting on the dates.
Okay.
Okay. Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries six zero. We have no policy for this evening, so we'll move on to administrative reports. But first, we want to find out if Chris won his baseball game or not.
We did.
Yeah.
And who did you play?
Egan.
Good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Sue Ann?
It's always a busy time of year when we get to May. It just seems like the days just fly by, but there are some, some points of interest I wanted you to know about. One is that over the course of this year and next year, I've been part of a technology leadership academy, and as part of that, I've taken a team of administrators with me to zoom up and think about what is it we need to do as a district to be on that techno, technological edge, so that we're offering an education to our students that's really in keeping with the times. And this past week, the team has included Jeff Holmberg and Christie Musman, Dave Lund, Sam Richardson, and Marcus Malazo, myself. And as part of it, we took a survey of where we are is with our, the way, how are we doing with our 21st century learning skills as a district? So we answered these questions together and came back with a rating, and in so many ways, we're doing really well. We've got the policymaking in order. We've stepped ahead of ourselves and said, if social media comes, what is it that we want to make sure that we have as far as rules and regulations? We're partnering. We've got that wonderful relationship with scale, and we've been able to add fiber throughout all of our schools because of that, with our county, and lots of other partnering that has helped us and assisted us as we move forward. And we have a focus on continuous improvement, of constantly getting better and not accepting today as being the best we can be. There are areas that we do, we know we need to continue to grow, and that is bringing technology into the classroom and having students not power down, but really power up, to be able to access technology not as their only learning format, but just as a tool to get them into that, that new learning environment. And certainly, the, building our education, our leadership within our organization so that we can really understand the true impact of what technology might have. So that's been a really exciting part of this new learning together. When you think of it, three years ago, we didn't know what an iPad was, and today, it seems like, you know, we just keep waiting for that new iteration to come out. Where will we be in three years from now? And how do we make sure that we're preparing students for that unknown future? And what are those skills? So that whole experience has been very positive and has really helped us in framing what it is we need to be doing as a district as we move forward. And as you've heard, this is Teacher Appreciation Week, National Teacher Day is tomorrow, so our best wishes to all of our teaching staff throughout our district, as well as the National Nutrition Workers Week, and those people with a smile on their face every day, no matter what, as they serve food to our children, and our students really are making a difference. So that's, that's an important part about this week. One of the things you might not know is that Matt Mons, our HR Director, and Julie Sink, our Director of Business Affairs, have been published in the latest Minnesota School Boards Association magazine, making a change, selecting a self-funded healthcare plan. So that is in your MSBA magazine that is just arriving on your doorstep with the cover that looks like this, so congratulations to both of them. They did not, however, complete the artwork.
Indeed.
But it's always fun to be published, and it's, we're very proud of the work that you've both done on that, so thank you for that. Our environmental education festivals are ongoing. I was over at Jeffers Pond last week as the children were outside exploring and moving through different stations, learning about trees, tree inspectors, tree specters, I think they were, and then we had rocks, and we had children in canoes, and if you remember, that was the day of the downpours, about 11 o'clock, and all the sirens going off, but they were able to get outside and enjoy the, the beauty of the nature and also do some pretty hands-on learning as they moved through that day and they continue throughout the different elementaries at this time. The Minnesota Department of Education Environmental and Outdoor Education Committee came to observe the JP's Festival and to take back what we're doing to the rest of the committees, as well as to learn from us what we're doing that they can share with other districts. As you know, Fivehawks had some graffiti and vandalism in their outdoor learning center, and our Prior Lake High School eco team took some time to clean it up, and now a local Eagle Scout and Fivehawks graduate Connor Anderson is doing a great deal of work to clean up that area and repair the gazebo. So many thanks to Connor and his work to make sure that that gazebo is, is better than it ever was. And last Saturday was the Dare Bike-A-Thon, so thank you to our Prior Lake Rotary for their continuing involvement with our students and making a difference in their lives. This is a traditional, this was the 22nd year of the Bike-A-Thon, and it was a great success. And just a reminder that the Vongs Golf Tournament brochures are kind of passed around if anyone's interested in being a part of that. Leo and Cindy Lee make a donation from the proceeds of that event back to our schools to help with our students that can't afford to be part of either co-curriculars or academics or whatever it is that we, we need at that given time, and we are very grateful for their support of our schools. And I think last year, we fielded two teams. This year, it's gonna be on June 11th. And I think that's it.
Okay. Our, looks like we have one administrative report.
Good evening. I was able to attend the Masville Workshop last week and listen to Tom Melcher, who is the Director of the Minnesota Department of Education, and he always gives a really entertaining update for the people in my business. I'm sure other people wouldn't think it's quite as interesting as I do. As you know, the legislature has really been focusing on funding the stadium. Very little has happened with education, which is typical in the second year of a biennium. So not a lot of changes have been made, but there are a couple of changes. We are, as Dr. Grover mentioned earlier, our funding has changed from 60-40, the shift, and it has increased to 64-36, so it does help with our cash flow. Our literacy funding, which next year will be the first year that we receive literacy funding, we were slated to receive $85 for every, for our third and fourth graders for growth and proficiency in the reading test, and is for every student in that school that was attending the school, and now they've changed it, they increased it from $85 to $530, but it's only for third and fourth grade students in those schools, so it doesn't count for any other grade levels but the third and fourth graders. The positive part of this is we actually receive about an additional, almost $50,000 for our district for this funding, and overall, it's about $454,000 that we will receive in addition next year for literacy funding, and that is new money to the district. The only other change that has come forward is in fiscal year 14, the fund balance requirement is repealed for community ed. If you remember, we used to have a 25% fund balance requirement, we couldn't exceed that. That has been repealed, and we try to stay below that, we always have, and we will most likely continue to stay below that. However, if we were to sneak above it one year, we would not be penalized. Those are the big changes that have been made this year for the legislature, in the legislative update.
Okay, are there any other administrative reports? Okay. Any board reports? Okay, Chris, go ahead.
The last few months, we've been meeting with Mr. Mark Malazo to meet about technology improvements in the high school, and we put a technology survey on the high school website and the high school Facebook page, and we're asking all students and parents of high school students to go on there and fill out the survey. It's about 20 questions, and it's just gonna help us to assess the situation with technology in the high school.
Interesting to hear the results.
Yeah.
Any other board reports?
Will we, will we see that? Survey results, those survey results?
We, we can once we get the data for that. I think we're allowing two weeks from today, it's, the survey will be open, and it should be instant results because of the website.
It'd be nice if you could, if the meeting come back and.
Sounds good.
Let us know.
Okay, future events. The board and administrator superintendent evaluations are due tomorrow, and those are on the website. There's a link that Martha provided for both. The district retirement celebration is May 17 from 3:30 to 5:30, and we have a facilities committee meeting on May 17 at 5 o'clock that all board members are invited to attend, and our next board study session is May 21 at 5 o'clock. If there's no other business, I'll take a motion to adjourn. By Eric, second by Stacy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming.